I wish to get with it because they had the biggest project I heard was up in the west of Arizona.
Yeah.
Bogos that just...
Yeah, but we have a super project.
Really?
In the valley.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the equivalent of having a super bowl every day. Yeah, when we walk into our typically...
Yeah, right, I bet you didn't. That was feeble.
I'll call this meeting to order. Diane, can you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Scoog is absent this evening. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ny.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
And Councilmember Rooney.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, first up this evening is the discussion of the Lake Shore Sculpture Project. Brian, it's all yours.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. As we all know, back in fiscal year 1516, we had our construction project out on Lake Shore, right adjacent to the Civic Center intersection with a widening that took place there. A portion of that construction project also entertained then a monumental sculpture in the development of the current plaza that exists at that particular site. We also are all aware of that with feedback from our community and council concerns, that project was canceled. It was canceled with only two of the three or two of the five elements completed out of that task, and payments were issued in the amount of $25,000. Four were completed towards that project. That funding also went away at the completion of the fiscal year, so there is no current or future scheduled funding for this particular project. With that being said, the Arts and Culture Commission is providing inquiry with council. And that inquiry is, does the town council desire to have the commission seek private funding for the continuation of the project? If so, does the town council desire the commission to formulate a private funding plan for continuation of the former sculpture as contracted or development of a new call notice specifically again for a monumental sculpture piece to be integrated to that site? So if there is a yes to that question, then we're asking for direction as regards to the development of a private funding plan for one of those two options. If no, no plan will be developed and the project, there will be no project as it currently sits today. Okay?
Okay, well, I guess it's time for some discussion, so Marty.
Yeah, I have a question. According to the notes and paperwork we have, we've already spent, what, $25,000 on this project?
That is correct.
So the other supposedly $65,000, that's supposedly going to go for the full model and installation and all the other items, is that sitting in a fund right now somewhere or is that totally gone?
There are, there are no funds, period.
Okay, because I was originally under the impression that money was already set aside and waiting to be spent.
When, when we canceled that contract and when the fiscal year ended, that money was done, gone, never to be seen again.
Okay, personally, this is the first I'm hearing of it, so that clarifies a whole lot.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would still, I mean personally, I'd still like to see some sort of artwork added to the project, but it would have to be privately funded if we can.
Yep, and that is, that is the only question is, is do we want to see it? And if so, developing a privately funded program of support for that. And then just the answer of option A, continuation of the former or creating a whole new call for a whole new project, but it again being privately funded and integrated into the current site.
Why don't we go ahead and start with Jody, and we'll just work our way down.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. And if you don't know the answer to this, you know, we might can direct it over here to our town manager. What else do we have here in our town that's privately funded?
There's a multitude of donations and contributions that happen throughout the year. As we know, we've seen them come through a variety of different groups, NCU being one of those, Summit Trail being a recipient of those types of opportunities. I can only speak to those few that were within our department, and yes, I would rely on our town manager for other possibilities.
Specifically talking about public art, the snake lady, I mean the so gentle tamer out in front of the Civic Center was privately purchased. The town participated in the base, but the actual bronze itself was a community effort and a very successful community effort actually spearheaded by somebody sitting at this table.
We won't mention any names.
No, not at all. So yes, that is exactly correct. There's been other donations of artwork into our permanent collection for the Art at the Center program too, so that would be another example of privately funded or donated services.
So Director, besides art, you said, did I hear correctly that there was a trail or some in the park? I'm just looking at the overview of everything.
Of everything in context, there's been donations to the trail, there's been donations of playground equipment, monies for specific projects and that nature, whether it be a portion of or a total contribution. So there's been a number of those types of things. They provide services too in regards to items and activities that we do, but from a capital standpoint, those are the large ones that come to mind.
Well, and there's another project that is ongoing right now, and that's the Boys and Girls Club. We're bringing CDBG money to the table, which is a federal funding source, but the Boys and Girls Club is raising, is it $100,000, Ryan?
Four hundred.
Four hundred thousand.
Yes.
That they're raising from private projects, donations and things to go ahead and enhance what we are bringing to the table.
Okay, so I believe it would be safe to say then that there is a partnership for some of these.
All right.
Yeah?
And again, the, another beauty of that is, is that the commission could also work with the Friends of Prescott Valley Parks and Recreation Foundation. So there's a foundational component of a 501(c)(3) that could be utilized and tethered and made available to folks too from a contribution standpoint. So small, big contributions and support from a partnership campaign, yes.
Okay, so finally, just closing up on the thought, would there also be partnerships set up for the library, for roads, for water? I want to know, what's the universal application?
I think it's safe to say that the, the town of Prescott Valley seeks partners in our ongoing effort to build a community. That's the real benefit of, of having partnerships like that. And so whether you have a partnership, another fine example of that is the dollars that are made available to Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation. They, we partner with the private sector to actually fund that foundation. And we're talking significant dollars on an ongoing basis. We're doing the same thing with GPREP, which is Greater Prescott Economic, whatever, a partnership. And so we, we are constantly seeking partners. And going back in the history of Parks and Rec, the first several years of our fireworks show at Mountain Valley Park that happens on July 4th, that was funded through partnerships, and then the first couple were exclusively partners paying for it. So over, over the years, we have encouraged partnership, partnering with citizens, with organizations, with companies, and we have a long history of that, quite frankly.
Okay, so it would be possibly a, a very familiar effort to partner in the form of financial or in kind with these other entities in these different areas?
That would be true.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you.
And you may recall, presented to you at the end of fiscal years, our department comes in and provides an annual report departmentally, where we're showing tens of thousands of dollars of in kind and donated monies for programs and services, artwork, all of those different types of things, so very familiar process for us.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Prescott Valley Police Foundation. That foundation has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years for enhancements to the police department's budget, and they have ongoing fundraisers that are part of those partnerships.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mike, do you have anything?
No, I just wanted to mention that I do agree, I think, with the focus we've had in the past and in the future in terms of establishing, I guess, a, a foundation for art in our community, especially here at the Civic Center, and I support continuing that in, in the future as well. You know, how we do that is always a question. I think we've always partnered in one way or another with the public and other private entities as well, and I don't know, you know, at this point, what the appetite is for private entities or other public entities to get involved. One thing I was interested is if we wanted to develop a new call notice, what would that entail? What would, what would encompass that call?
Basically, again, we just go right back to the drawing board. We'd follow that foundation of development, reaching out. We'd need to make determinations at the commission level of whether we want to have it being a state call or a national call. The decision was made on the previous project as a national campaign. There would be some investments that would need to be made if we were on a national call level. At a state level, I think there's some partnership opportunities that we can work in that may come to us at little to no cost, opportunities there as well, of working in that fashion. And then I think we could really use that same template of outreach again and going through a journeying process like we did before of facilitating in that way and then coming back with recommendations for your approvals.
Yeah, the only downside I feel, and it's just my own personal perspective, is that I'm not a real supporter of that corner in terms of artwork, whether it's a sculpture or statue, whatever we want to call it. And I would, as I mentioned, be interested in pursuing this and maybe looking at options that we have other than just that one corner, is where I'm coming from. And I do like the fact that, you know, I think when we had input from the community, there was some confusion about why we went national, why we had a national artist versus a local artist, and so it was just a lack of information. But it's always nice to stay home and look for resources in our community that's willing to help us in developing things like that. So, you know, I think I would support continuing our efforts as far as art and not necessarily for that corner, but other places in the community. And I see somebody shaking their head because they don't, I guess, like art, but public art is something that is part of our character in the community, and we've done it for years, and I'm sorry, it is something we've done for years and is a, a part of our value system in, in our town government and in our community. And I don't think we've ever had people come to the community and say, "Well, I hate artwork. I don't want to see artwork here. We don't want other people spending money on artwork for the community." It's something that I think we all value one way or another. And so, you know, I would support, you know, looking at options that we have before us now, not necessarily supporting the corner that we're considering now. The last question I had is, what kind of private funding plan would we be looking at in terms of developing? I'm not familiar with whether or not we've done that in the past.
Right, and that would be basically the charge that you would put back to the Arts and Culture Commission, and we would need to work with them also, some foundation and grant writers, a variety of different folks in, in regards to developing that totality of a plan. And if that would be the direction that you would like this to go, we would like to come back with that plan for your review, your support, giving us then the go-ahead of engagement of that plan, seeking those funds. So that, I really don't have a definitive answer for you tonight, because I believe it could come in a variety of different ways of being able to realize whatever that amount is that we're looking at based upon whatever direction you also give us this evening.
So we don't have an actual plan in place right now in terms of future consideration.
No, sir, we do not.
I, I think that's something we definitely would need one way or another.
Correct.
Regardless of whatever this is. And, you know, a lot of people here tonight too are shaking their head, you know, and that's fine, you know, everybody has their own opinion. But, you know, before anything is done, you know, we're shaking our head at, what are we shaking our head at? I'm not sure.
Right.
So we need to develop some idea that people can then say, "No, I don't like it," or "Yes, I'd like to see it," you know, however you want to shake your head.
Gotcha.
So I think I've said enough, thank you.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it might be, it might be that you can answer it, or maybe it'll be Larry. But we do have a vision and a plan for this town. It's called the general plan. It's a roadmap. Do we discuss this type of stuff in there? I didn't actually look it up, but I will look that up later on because the vision and the general plan is done by the citizens for the last 20-some years. So that is a vision and a plan of the citizens that have lived here going forward. And my belief is, is that that's our roadmap. This is something that's in the plan. This is something that we talked about in that plan. Then it's something that we should continue to look at. Private funding is fine with me. Taxpayers' dollars is not fine with me.
Thank you, Mary.
Do you want to address the general plan part?
Well, that's what I was, to answer your question. You're exactly right. This is an element of our general plan and, and art being part of that, parks being part of that, streets being part of that, all of those different elements that go back into, what Mr. Tarkowski alluded to in regards to the development of our community and Councilmember Whiting as well. Those elements are in there. Those elements come up every year as part of a budgeting process and development that is available for review, conversation, approvals, denials, that entirety of its process, that was part of this project as well. I know 10 years ago, as part of my interview, this was a discussionary item at that time that preceded every single one of our council members here today in regards to the vision, the plan of doing those types of things. So yes, you are correct in regards to that plan and its approval and review by the citizens in regards to doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, if, if I could expand on that a bit, several of our general plans, and certainly the last two that have been voted on by the electorate, there is a component in that that talks about public art. It talks about, and if I can recapture some of the conversation that went on during the creation of both of the most recent plans, is the, the conversation went along the lines of, you know, any community can build roads, any community can put in sewer lines, any community can put in water lines. Okay, the, the critical infrastructure is easy, okay? But what do you want Prescott Valley to have that makes it unique, makes it different, makes it interesting? And all of those elements that were discussed in the general plan and the creation of that plan, and one of the resounding comments made and recommendations is that we are special. We're a, a very good, great, unique community. And one of those elements can be seen in public art. Didn't talk about whether that should be taxpayer-funded or privately-funded. It didn't, it didn't speak to that issue, but it did speak to going ahead and incorporating public art in all of the elements in the creation of and the continued building of this community. I can point out the discussions in previous councils have gone ahead and went along the lines where, that other communities in the state of Arizona have gone ahead and used, and they actually have established a percentage of each Public Works project. Okay, so if you build a $100,000 project, or, well, let's get real, a million-dollar project is still a small one, okay, that 1% of that million dollars must, I say must, not, this is not elective, must be spent on public art. There are many communities in the state that do that, okay, to expand the reach of public art and to make their communities interesting. Other communities actually have a bigger percentage of Public Works projects that have to incorporate art in them, and it's just, it's a formula, and they end up doing that. Oftentimes, for example, this building, meaning the library, would qualify as art as well as the structure of the building. More infamously was somewhat of a disaster in some people's minds when the 51, the freeway, was built in Phoenix, and there were pots and other things that were set up on the sound walls. Okay, that, that was not well-received, but art's always controversial.
So just for anyone watching or our audience, of course, the general plan is accessible on the website.
That's right.
And if anyone would like to go in to take a look, you can find the areas in there that categorizes different things. And again, the general plan is the vision of people long before I ever arrived here in this community. And so this, these are the things that the community came together, they talked about, they put it in a book, they did a lot of time. Sometimes those general plans took like a year to two years, if I'm not mistaken. So there's a lot of effort put into that, and, and I'm very much about believing that when a community sets a vision, that people coming after that should respect that and follow it. So I will do a little bit more research on how it is, but I invite anyone watching or out in the audience to take the opportunity to take a look into the general plan of Prescott Valley, to see where you've been, to see where we are, and to see where we're going.
That it? Thank you. Laura.
This issue has consumed me for quite a while, and I had already had several citizens contact me before the article was in our Prescott Valley Tribune on Wednesday. I have really, really have a lot of information in this instrument from citizens. The majority, the overwhelming majority, and I can show anyone who doesn't want to believe me, want art in our community. To use one phone call I had kind of late last night, actually, after we got home from the pal dinner, they don't want to live in a soulless community. For them, a community without arts and culture is a soulless community. And Mary and Larry are so right. The citizens who envisioned what our community would be like gave it a soul. They knew we needed art and we needed culture. I do not want to be insulting to that very minute percentage of citizens who never want a dime their money or anyone else's money spent on arts and culture because I want to honor their freedom and their right as American. But when you're the smallest percentage in a community, why do you think you have the right to tell entire rest of the community what should and should not be of value to a community? I have the privilege of serving on the very first Arts and Culture Commission in this town, and we, we saw all of that information in the general plan, and we used that to develop our vision. And Michael, I listened carefully to what you had to say about the corner. That was the vision of the Arts and Culture Commission. They wanted all along, both ends, particularly, you know, of Civic Circle Drive because of a lot of traffic. Now, I think it's interesting, Michael, we didn't know about Walmart then. We didn't know we were going to really be getting a lot more traffic coming by and checking out the soul of our community. So, so for you to know, that's how that came about. It comes down to a value system. How many of you people who don't want art have pictures on your wall at home? How many of you paint a pleasing color, maybe on the outside of your house and on the inside of the house? Do you ever put flowers in a vase in your home? Do you plant flowers outside? Do you have rugs on your floor? Do you have any ornamentation at all? That's art. That's putting soul in your home. That's softening it so that things are pleasing in the stressful life that we all live. You have become an artist when you do that. I hardly know what to say to people who aren't moved by art, so I won't address that. In answer to your question, my answer is B.
Okay.
And I want to give you the reason for that. I have been very quiet all this time, but I am fully aware that the majority of the artists that submitted to our bid didn't follow the instructions they were given. That was not the, the dream of the Arts and Culture Commission at that time. They had a different vision. We have been criticized because we didn't use a local artist, and you know, I can understand that. The Arts and Culture Commission did everything they could to get local artists to submit, and when they did not, again, that very small percentage of citizens held them up to ridicule when they had reached out and preferred probably in some of the hearts a local artist. Well, with B, we can start fresh, we can shake off all the bad vibes, if you will, of what has gone before us. We can respect this community and the vision of those that Mary spoke about that came before us. My understanding, and I was just rereading it a couple times, a citizen reminded me that after the deadline, we had a local submission. So by opening this up again, perhaps we could get some local submissions, and I'd very much like to go forward and make every effort to have local artists come forward. I don't have a problem if the artists that our commission had chosen had been from Tanzania, I would have supported them. Art is subjective. The common term is eye of the beholder. Art is in the eye of the beholder. I don't much care where something that moves me was created. I just want to feel something when I look at it, and that's what the majority of human beings who... beings who value art feel. They just want to feel something. Just recently, last month as a matter of fact, I had the privilege to be invited by the Prescott Area Leadership Class to come and do a presentation on art. They were very young, they were wonderful to talk to. I brought in a lot of pieces of art from all over the world, I've been so blessed to travel, and introduced that to them. And then, then we toured, we toured Art Collection of Art. I was so choked up at the comments of these young people, at the value that they held, and the praise that they were heaping on those of us that were representing our community. And I'm going to be very bold and do something that could be interpreted as insulting, but it didn't come from me, it came from a young Prescott resident. And when we finished the tour, he very loudly said, "Wow, you've got it way over Prescott, I'm so proud of you." That's why I got so emotional. This, why would we deprive value to the largest percentage of our community, of our citizens, for the very, very few that aren't moved by art, that don't feel anything, I assume I don't know? That's like punishing an entire community for a very few. Again, they have that right, thank God we are America, they have that right, but I asked them to give me that same right back. We represent our citizens, and we better remember that all the time, it's not the squeaky few. I want us to go forward with B, and I worked very hard to raise the money for the Notso General Tamer, and I'm willing to do that again.
Well, I'll try to keep my remarks short this evening. Art, I feel, along with swimming pools, libraries, parks, are all of what makes a community worth living in. I don't believe today we would have a hospital, I don't believe we would have Mountain Valley Rehab Hospital in our town. If we didn't have those amenities, if we weren't a town that depended on those things to bring people into our town, I think they're very important. However, I also believe that there are functions that a town plays a big part in, and we're the only, we're the bottom level of watching out for the people's money. And I think when funds are scarce, it's incumbent upon us to use them as wisely as we possibly can. And I'm not sure that public money, right now, belongs being spent on art. I would support private money being raised, I would support item B with a new plan, because I never did care for that other choice, but I also want to say, in defense of that, that when you select a committee to make a decision, you've allowed them to make that decision, and to second guess them is unfair, I believe. So I never did try to go back and make them change their mind, because that's not what we do. But I don't like it, I wouldn't go any further with it, that's why we stopped it when we did, and I wouldn't put any more public money towards that. And nothing's going to change my mind about that. As far as art in the future, I encourage it, and if there's ways that we can do that, then certainly I want to work towards that. I just don't think right now is the time to be putting money into those areas from the town. I think there are other areas where we need to put it first, but I don't think it needs to be ignored, I think it's something we need to work very hard on. And as Laura Lee said, she'll work very hard in getting this money, and I would work alongside her to do that, because I do believe it's important, and I would never, ever say that we should not add more art to our town, because it is important, and I want to see that happen. So, that's what I have. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to say, because we can't make decisions tonight anyway? Marty, did you have anything else?
Okay, I guess I might be a little bit on the spoiled side, because growing up in New York City, I used to go to museums all the time, and there are so many in New York, and every large building in Manhattan, there's a piece of sculpture in front of it, and they're always a point of interest. I mean, anywhere I go, anywhere I travel, I'm always looking at artwork, and, I mean, even, you know, old buildings, you know, you don't see the architecture from, you know, the 20s, 30s, and 40s, you don't see that anymore. So when you come across an area of a town or a city, you know, where you have all this unique architecture, I just stand there and, you know, able to stare at it and, you know, appreciate, you know, that is there. I've been to Europe a few times, and London, and you just, I take tours, and I have guided tours, and it's always the museums and the artwork and, you know, what it offers, and it just gives us a point of interest when someone comes here. I love, you know, when people come and visit, I just love bragging about the town, what we have, I'll bring them past the library, and, you know, the whole civic center, because of all the artwork that we have out there, and it's just unique to the area, and I think it's worthwhile. So, yeah, we need the artwork, we need the cultural awareness, we need the children of this area to know that their creativity in the future would be appreciated, you know, and if they see something that they like, and they, you know, they tell their parents or their teacher or whoever, "This is what I want to do," I think that would be great. I mean, every year, we have that art, you know, we have the art in the civic center, we have all the different kids, and we have some very talented kids in this area, and they prove it every year when we have the display in the civic center. And for those of you that have not come out to see that, you missed a lot of good artwork, you know, and a lot of creativity. So, yeah, you know, yeah, it would be nice to be able to have a, and I think we do have a large population to, that would definitely donate to an art project and future art projects, so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
I think just to add on to what Councilman Grossman said in regards to the children. So I think that it would be fabulous to reach out and work with our colleges, our high school, all different levels, and see the art that they would do, the sculptures, you know, and I think that alone would be an amazing way to be fundraising, because we are already suffering tremendously when it comes to our educational system and things like that. So I think if we, as a community, can start to work together and start working relationships with the schools in our state, and then, as the artwork comes along, it would be fundraised through, people would help, and the money would go and help with the kids, I'm not sure on all the details, but it's a thought. And I am about 99.9% sure that everybody would be on board to see our young adults, who someday will be as world famous as some of the ones that we now see today. And then to come back into their town and see a sculpture that they might have done when they were in college or high school, and it's sitting in the center, that's just amazing. And they'll come back, and they'll bring their family, and they'll say, "I did this when I was in 12th grade," and it's still here. And you know, that's, that is like, that's really the heart to a community, to uplift, to bring somebody's future up in front of them, and to encourage them, and to go forward, and that's how, that's how you work, that's how it works best for everybody. And at the end of the day, you don't even think about the money, because at the end of the day, it's not about the money, it's about the lives that you have uplifted through your young adults who have gone forward, and then they'll go forward and help others to achieve the same goals that they would have had. And that's really where it comes down to community. So that's something to think about and look forward. There's a lot of great things here, and I think that to just have a tunnel vision about saying no isn't the right thing, because when I go to a city and town, the first thing I go to look for is the history, and it's the history of all of it. And I really appreciate what somebody else left behind for me to take the time to enjoy and learn from. So I really believe the school system could be something we could really latch into.
So I think what we'd better do at this point, Brian, if you can take the things that you need answers to, and one at a time, repeat them to us, and maybe we can get some idea of where we stand so that you can go back to the commission.
Yes, sir.
So what's the first thing you need to know?
Well, the first thing that I would like to express is thank you all for your input and your conversations on this particular subject. What I do want to reiterate is, for everyone's understanding, there is no taxpayer money on discussion currently or in the future as it relates to this particular project. We are talking about A question, number one. Does the town council desire to have the commission seek private funding for the continuance of the Lake Shore Civic Plaza Sculpture Project?
Is there anyone that would say no to that?
I have a question about it. Is that the one that's already approved or using B?
That is the next question.
All right. Then mine is no.
Okay. You do not desire the commission to seek private funding for the continuation?
Not for the existing.
Then that's not the question. The question is only about putting a sculpture.
Immediately start tomorrow.
Okay.
Next question.
Next ques, so if the answer is yes, if yes.
I'm only one check with the rest of them.
Right? So is the answer to that first question yes?
Well, I have an open mind, so I think we ought to proceed until we get to a point where we're going to make a decision what the impacts would be.
Correct, correct, yes. And with that, then, in the creation of that private funding plan, does the council desire to continue the former sculpture? Or B, does the council desire the formulation of a private funding plan for a new call notice for monumental public sculpture at that location?
Okay, I would ask each member then to either answer A or B, please. Jody?
I would say B for the new call notice.
Michael?
B.
Mary?
B.
B for myself?
B, 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 B.
I concur, B.
Okay. I think you have your answers.
I do. We will formulate, I will sit down with the Arts and Culture Commission, we will formulate a private funding plan, no taxpayer money given to this project, with the understanding that item B, the development of a new call notice, go forward, and the focus will be at that particular location as previously developed, at the corner of Lake Shore and Civic, in doing that. Now, that plan will then be brought forward to you for review, your consideration and approvals for advancement. Fair enough?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you to everyone that came in tonight. Okay, next item, discussion of Glassford Hill Road, Tuscany Traffic Signal Norm. It's your turn.
I will. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. What I'm going to talk to you about tonight is the Glassford Hill-Tuscany Signal Development, and the first question may be, well, where's the Glassford-Tuscany Signal? What's important to note about the exhibit you have in front of you is, it's actually at the existing Granville Parkway intersection. There's a three-legged intersection that's been in place since 2005, but the way land planning and the light goes, the actual western leg that's being added by the Granville Development at their cost is actually going to be called Tuscany Way, because it's actually a continuation of road connectivity down to the existing Tuscany Way that hooks all the way down south of Santa Fe and comes into Glassbridge. So that's why, get your bearings, that's why this exhibit helps to show that it's actually the existing Granville Parkway intersection, but the western leg will be called Tuscany. Why are we doing this project? If you looked in our current FY 1617 budget, it's not in there. So it is our obligation by development agreement that the town public dollar is responsible for the third leg of the signal, which is basically just an arm, all the poles are up on the four intersections, we have to put the mast arm up in order to run that west leg. So if you look at the exhibit, that's really what's going in, is actually the mast arm's even in our inventory, it was purchased in 2005 when that original signal went in. So we're going to use that in inventory and have the contractor hang it up and do the rewiring. Other thing I wanted to add, that's the obligation of the town, is if you look at the northbound left turn lane, it's got a very short pocket. So what we need to do for good safety, for, you know, traffic speed and deceleration, we have to add on to that particular, what we call northbound left turn lane. So that's the project, wasn't in the budget, but it's our obligation under development agreement. Why didn't we put it in the budget? You know, the private sector, when they build subdivisions, they have to adhere to the economy. Well, the economy, I guess, has been roaring, because they are really working lots of crews, and you see them moving the dirt, and the infrastructure, they have really accelerated Granville Unit 10. So we have to be ready for them to make sure that, actually, our target dates is to make sure the signal's working with their opening, and they're looking at opening in May and having all that infrastructure complete. So we had to keep up, so what we did was, we looked in particular Public Works budget, and we looked at any fund balances we had in order to pay for the particular signal. So if you look at the council action, there's several, as I say, HERF fund balances, part of it was the Glassford Trail, if you look, that's budgeted next year, because that's not going to be spent this year, so it was a good funding source to use HERF dollars for this particular roadway improvement, and some of the overlay accounts, so we cobbled up a few of the particular budget items. What does that mean for the budget for other projects? This is a must, we have to do it, so did have some fund balances that weren't going to be spent, but there are some other fund balances that this is an obligation we'll plan for. So we do have the funding available in order to do this. One thing I think that's real important to point out, too, is the developer's obligation. If you look at the color, that's kind of a salmon color, I guess, that's the developer's obligation, is he's building all of his public infrastructure for his subdivision. In addition to, if you see the southbound right turn deceleration lane, a few hundred feet there, that's his obligation as part of their development criteria for, to accommodate, you know, the engineering and traffic plans and the like. So it's important to see there, that we do have a partnership with Granville, that they have to get those lanes paid before we actually do some of the signal improvements to cut in loops. So we've got a partnership going, and we've been working the last six months with them to make sure the timing of the bidding of the project also worked well within their timeline to get the work done, so we're in there right at the right time to work together to finish it. Each of us basically has a 50% stake in making sure the signal goes in. So close relationship with the Granville Development to coordinate the construction. Good news about the bid, that we sent this out for bid, we did receive a local contractor interest, we had three bids, and asphalt paving supply is the low bid, and we're very confident with their $158,000 bid in order to do the improvements, as we've talked about, that is the obligation per the development agreement. So other thing I'd like to point out, that's really about the signal, let's talk about timeline. If we move forward for award next week, we anticipate getting started about May 1st, that works well with the Granville Development, probably by about June 1st, this signal will be operational and be able to open up that particular western leg and that new Granville Unit 10 development. One thing I do want to point out, is take a little bit more with council, is if you see in the exhibit, down to the bottom part of the exhibit, you see that future act- see in the exhibit, down to the bottom part of that exhibit, you see that future access control at Granville Parkway South. What's important to note is that, as part of any development, we plan for, you know, continued mobility. Well, character of road changes. Glassford Hill Road is very much different than in 2005 when this signal went in. We got a lot of questions, the staff is, geez, guys, why did you put it there? Because we're looking at the long-range plan rather than put it at the school. Well, the time is now, it's been 10 years, but that's always been planned that way, that the signal would go there and serve lots of mobility and trips, traffic trips off to the west. So what we're looking at, to speak to the point, is Granville Parkway. We're looking at moving forward due to, you know, character of the road changing, many more vehicles over the last 10 years, you know, we're up, we're doing traffic counts hopefully in the next month, but many more vehicles, we're seeing the incidence of accidents there. That left out of Granville Parkway is, you know, the best recommendation from us transportation engineers, we need to close it. And that's what we'd like to move forward with. And, you know, where does that idea come from? I think it's important to note, Councilman Mallory pointed out, our general plan, that's what we follow. All of these long-range plans are in play. Where do we come up with, you know, Tuscany going to the west? Of course, it doesn't have a name 10, 15 years ago when we planned for it, but now it does. But right out of the general plan, we've always talked about access control and maintaining that particular mobility of Glassford Hill Road to move lots of traffic safely. So as part of that, you can see the upper exhibit talks about an access management plan for Glassford Hill Road. And in detail, whoop, how'd that one get in there? Well, to speak to that, I don't have what I'm looking for there. But what I'm, what I speak to is, you see that upper exhibit up there does have access management control. That's been in the general plan, as you saw, and was ratified in 2013. So the access management plan is just that, that it does call out to move forward with those particular closures. And you can see where the only intersections and signals are at selected locations, called access management controls. So we would move forward with closing that particular access point. The other one I'd like to bring to council's attention while we're talking about the Glassford Hill Road corridor, is I think I've mentioned to council before, the frontage road here near Highway 69, another median area that we've seen the character change. You can't cross all those six lanes of traffic safely, seeing lots more incidents for accidents. It would be the recommendation to go out for an engineering study this next year, to do the study, to get that professional recommendation. Yes, that's what you need to do. Here's the accidents, this is why it makes sense, and it's in concurrent with good traffic engineering. So that's what staff would like to propose for the next coming year, if that's all right. And the reason I'm bringing it to you is, the character of the road changes, now with the new signal going in at Tuscany, it's time to start looking at those. And we're seeing the incidents for accidents. Any questions I can answer about council, of course, of the signal and where the access control?
Yeah, just interested, you're bringing up the 69 Glassford Hill. Is that the only area you're looking at at this point? Because, you know, there are some other intersections that have some similar types of issues.
Right. You know, I always like to point out, you know, Glassford Hill Road's probably about 40 to 50% built out in what its ultimate configuration would be, with the hardscaping of the third lane and the curb running sidewalk. To answer your question, even the Tuscany Signal, we've, I've, just call it Tuscany South, near the Long Look intersection, we only have, we've talked about as part of that intersection project, we're going to extend out the left-in capability at the Tuscany South intersection, but no left out. That's continuation of when we've got funding to put the median barrier and to restrict those accesses out. So to answer your question, yes, we're looking at that whole Glassford corridor. As the character changes, we've gotten more different access points being perfected and finished. So the question, yes, we've looking at all those particular areas to make sure we continue on with maintaining that mobility of Glassford Hill Road, that it moves traffic safely and efficiently. And those driveways, when you try to cross the three lanes, it's just, when the ultimate configuration is six lanes, it doesn't work. And you can see that model in other instances where you've got six lanes in larger cities that you don't cut across all those lanes.
Anyone else?
I got a question. Several, in fact. Okay, could you go back to the first picture? The one with the salmon-colored?
I'm getting dizzy.
That one?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay. Now, that Tuscany Way is now going to be a brand-new road that you're putting in?
Developers billing is part of Granville Unit 10s, but correct.
But there is still another Tuscany Way south of that, correct?
Correct. It hooks, it will ultimately cook all the way down.
Okay. All this time that you've been talking about putting in a left-hand turn onto Tuscany Way, have you been talking about this or the other intersection?
Both, I think. Because we did discuss this Tuscany Way, the northern Tuscany Way, is the new leg off to the west. But when I talk about the southern Tuscany, that's just north of Long Look, that's an existing location, that's the complete continuation.
Are we still talking about putting in a left-hand turn at that intersection, Tuscany South?
That was awarded by council last week, that project. So there's going to be a left-in.
All right. I just want to make sure that we're--
And access control with the median, as we talked about.
Okay.
Which restricts you from turning left out of Tuscany South.
Okay, so this signal light is the one that's existing, and we're just going to be adding in the, well, the developer's going to be adding in the new road, and we're also, and on Glassford Hill, we're talking about just the widening and adding the turn lane.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure we're all on the same page.
Too many Tuscan words.
Yeah, well, I just want, you know, yeah.
Any other questions?
I wanted done yesterday.
Well, as we say, we'll coordinate with the developer, we're looking forward by June 1st. We'll get the contract award and asphalt paving supply will do a very good job.
Okay, that's my little attempt at humor to say, let's move it along, you know, very well, because it's urgently needed.
Very good, we'll do that.
Bring it back.
Bring it back next week.
Next item. Summer 2017 pavement maintenance program. I'm going to take a wild guess that this may also be yours, Norm. I don't see any asphalt, but I'm going to guess that it's yours.
Disappointed. I was waiting to see his colorful map. I wonder when my block's being done.
Yeah, I was just looking at my last presentation, just had one slide out of place, but I think we discussed all the issues, so we'll make sure we get them right for next week's meeting. Yes, the summer 17 pavement maintenance program. As you know, council, with the half-cent sales tax that was implemented in January of '16, we've really supercharged our pavement maintenance. And keep in mind, it just goes for pavement maintenance, no really particular capital. So it's a maintenance account. And what I like to do is bring to you the current program we have planned for this year. It's ongoing throughout the year, but I wanted to just do a little checkpoint with you at this particular point to show you what we've done so far and where we're going this particular summer season. As you're probably well aware, the best time to do asphaltic treatments is the summer period. It's really the best time to do these particular treatments. So throughout the year, we do smaller maintenance treatments in anticipation of spending lots of money in the summer construction season. I think council's aware that when we had the particular approval in January, when we collected the funding, in July, we spent $1.7 million by August, in about a month and about six weeks. So, and throughout the year, we make sure that, you know, that's adequate, efficient expenditure of dollars, but throughout the year, we do other smaller maintenance projects to maintain our pavements. So what you have in front of you is the summer 17 maintenance program. It looks very similar to the summer '16 maintenance program, but just moving to the different parts. As we've talked about, council, is to hit the different roadways that have been done last. So it's a very methodical approach, and we'll go into a few more slides. But here's the maintenance program we have for this year. And of course, all of this is available on the website, but I'll just hit the highlights for you of where we've been. What's important to note is, you see in the legend on the side, that the $2 million is what we have dedicated in that half-cent for enhanced pavement maintenance throughout the town. So just wanted to give you a little breakdown of how that splits out. You've got the chip seal basically at 1.4 million, and then what council's direction was, too, was we wanted to make sure we did some pre-chip maintenance on some of the older roads to get them up to a better service level standard. So we spend quite a bit of money on patching, edge patching, I'll go on to that, spot patching, to make sure that when we put that final chip seal layer down, that that road integrity has been, met a certain service level standard before we put down the chip seal. So we work very hard with the private contractors, too, in order to bring that to us. Council may recall that part of our maintenance to get to that ultimate chip seal is we do crack seal on some of our engineered pavements. So this was our fall crack seal. Council may recall that we hired an outsourced contractor and bought the crack seal material. And if you look at the particular roadways identified here, it'll look very much like the crack sealed roads are the ones that also get chip sealed. So that's part of the pre-maintenance plan on some of the engineered pavements. We do crack seal, where we have cracks and get them ready and fill them up so water doesn't intrude. So this mimics about the same one you saw first, is you'll see a lot of those particular roadways that are being chip sealed, got crack sealed in the fall, and then we come in the summertime and apply the chip seal. This is, look at a chip seal operation, you haven't seen one, but this is what a chip seal operation looks like. You can see them filling cracks in some of the engineered pavements. And that's what an engineered pavement looks like when it's been crack sealed adequately in order to receive that chip seal. We let it cure out a little bit, but this road is ready for a chip seal. Another maintenance treatment we do is, we talked about some of the pre-chip maintenance and edge patching, to get the roadway historical widths back to where they were. Council, you saw this in August with some of the other slides about some of the work we did in-house and with the contract community, but this is our pre-chip maintenance program on a particular road. This will get chip sealed this year, but as you saw, this was July and August, we went through and did these particular units. It's basically east of Robert Road, some of those units, and, you know, north of Florentine, we took care of all those pre-chip maintenance. And you saw some of those slides in August, just to rehash again, this is some of the core of the town, some of the older roadways that we restored, some of the edge. As you see, we bring in, you know, new pavement edge, restore what the garbage trucks break down of the edges. And as you can see, you've got the streets guys raking out that and, of course, preparing that surface. And this is a road that has been prepared with some, quite a bit of extensive patching to get it to historic levels, and that's ready for a chip seal. So those particular roadways you saw are ready for a chip seal application now. So different treatments depending on the character of the road. This is our edge patching and significant patching. And of course, this slide basically shows, this is the final layer. I always liked this particular slide because it shows where a road has been prepared, chip seal on a half, and then, of course, you've got the operation of the chip seal by private contractor and what we call the chip seal train behind them, preparing the particular roadway and the rollers and that finished product for a chip seal. So that's been our program this past year. And one thing I wanted to make sure that council's aware of, I'd like to go back to the slides, back to the original one. We use a different chip seal maintenance treatment as applied, that, as you can see here, that the different colors will indicate on some of our major arterials, we use a little more expensive product for our major arterials. It's a larger chip, it's got a little rubber in it, a little more membrane. Obviously, it costs a little more, but we think it's a good application for our major arterials, if a road really has been, you know, in need of that particular treatment. So it'd be nice to do it on all roads, but once again, it's about 25% more in cost. So when you see the two different colors, you might have the public ask, well, how come the major arterials got a bigger product and they, you know, put an oil treatment on the top when they leave? It didn't get in on the low-volume residential streets. That's staff's determination to say what maintenance treatment fits the roadway best. So if you get that question, our major arterials get what we call a high-volume chip seal, it's a better road pavement, a little more expensive to do that, and the lower-volume streets actually get that particular treatment. One thing we did want to, when I go back and talk about the major maintenance, you can see the roads that, where we just talked about, east of Robert Road, that was last year's huge effort to get them up to a better service level standard. As you can see, they're being chip sealed. And of course, when we talked about the pre-chip maintenance that'll go on this summer concurrently with the pre-chip, we do quite a bit of that pre-chip maintenance for next year's chip seal. So as you can see, that's delineated by the orange there. So if you look at the chip seal maps, that's going to receive the maintenance, and that'll be next year's chip seal, all those orange areas in those neighborhoods. So Councilman Grossman, you asked, when will our streets be done? It's all a methodical approach on who got done last, and leading up to what we really started with when we started this a couple of years ago. There's high volume, the difference in costs, as you can see, we've just talked about. But this is the map that's really the one we started with. When we talked about the different colors, as you see in the legend there, it's the roads that got done last. So what you can see is the roads that needed a little heavier chip maintenance, we had to do that maintenance treatment first, and that's why it gets a chip seal this year. So we talked about, the $2 million gets us caught up every two years. You can see some of the last colors are east of Robert Road or the oldest roads, those will get a chip seal, and we'll start clipping off and getting that 10-year maintenance cycle down to that five-year we talked about in five years. And that's, you know, this is the, I guess, the mother chip seal that guides us. You can see it's been updated with the red, that was done last summer. So I think this plays well with the, any residents or anybody that wants to be explained why we do what we're doing. It's very methodical of what was done last in the approach to get us caught up with our chip seal program. And last slide, not only is this our website that shows each one of those and links to all those exhibits, the middle is what I really like to call attention to. None of this happens without the streets guys you see up there. They're the ones who work very hard throughout the year and deliver all the hard work. You saw the hand raking, raking hot asphalt is hard work, and that's the group that brings you that. In addition to our inspection crews, when we outsource, we got a local contracting community that really helped us last year to get a lot of that patching done. So partnership between not only in-house street crews, but also our local contract community, helping us get the major street improvements and enhancements done in advance of the chip seal. In addition, last year's project was done by Earth Resource, it was a local contractor. That's in a nutshell, that's the pavement maintenance program. That's an update, we're moving right along, we're very happy with, I think, our specifications, how we're moving forward. I do like to point out to council, as you know, things don't ever seem to move fast enough. At $2 million a year, I like to point out, we just have completed year one, we've met our goals. We've got four more to go to get to there. So be patient, we methodically keep moving forward each year, and we will get there. But there are still roads that are in need. I'd like to say that, yes, they're out there, but the ones that were done were in worse shape than the ones we're at. So we're going to get better, and give it a couple of years, we'll really turn the corner and see enhancements. But as you're aware, we took care of a lot of our major arterials that seize the most traffic. So our major arterials, we did quite a bit of work on those, and we'll continue to make sure we deliver the program as we talked about. Be happy to answer any questions you've got right now.
Anyone have questions?
I'm just glad to see that as a town and a council and everything, and a community, that we aren't sitting here like we were a year and a half ago, wondering what we were going to do, but that we've actually accomplished a tremendous amount last year, and that we're moving forward and we're taking care of a problem. And that's nice. And I appreciate that. Appreciate that from you, Norm, I appreciate that from the whole community of the town. So thank you, everybody.
Councilman, that's, you know, a key comment, it's the whole community taking part in this. As I mentioned, we significantly use the private contractor community to help us with all this, and it's their work and partnerships. It's the workmanship and the expertise those particular individuals have, the field workers that do that quality job. So it's very much an enjoyed working relationship with them.
Jody.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I heartily agree with Councilmember Mallory on this. Mary, my grandmother said, "Take care of what you have," and that's what we did here. And by voting in the half-cent sales tax, we're able to take care of what we have. And I would ask that our town manager, just to give a quick reminder, what does this half-cent sales tax cover?
Before I answer that, I was wondering, Norm, is that a piece of art?
I didn't want to start with that, but I was thinking about it the whole time. So to me, it's art.
When the mayor and council considered, after long deliberation and many public opportunities for input, the half-cent sales tax that was instituted a year ago was targeted at two things, two things only. Two-thirds of the proceeds of that went to the street department to go ahead and get us into a five-year maintenance rotation, and the public works department has done an outstanding job of moving forward with that. The other element of that increase was to take one-third of the proceeds from that half-cent sales tax and use it for the police department. Specifically, based on the priorities articulated by the police professionals, was manpower, police professionals, was manpower, number one, manpower. And so to that end, last year, eight individuals were put into the academy, and those, well, actually, we have one of those individuals sitting here in the back of the room, who is the beneficiary of that, who is a very eager young man, who is just about at the end of his field training, and his instructor shared with me that he doesn't know if he's going to pass or not, but not really, not really. But the individual in the back of the room is one of those that will be out on the streets on their own, although they're out on the streets now, but on their own in a very short period of time. And that essentially consumes the one-third of that sales tax. And we have brought to council that any growth in the proceeds collected by that sales tax will be committed to continue to buy down the town's liability for the public safety retirement system, so that we don't find ourselves in a period of time having an enormous amount of money. We continue to nibble away at that number. And so, there it is.
Marty.
Of course. First of all, the amount of road improvements and maintenance that was done last year as a result of us passing the tax and having the funds available, our crews and the contractors that we hired did an awesome job in doing a lot more roads than I even thought imaginable that we were able to do within that period of time. Okay. But I will ask you the question, the same way I've been getting them, okay, and I'll use my own block as an example, okay? The last time any Public Works crew was on my block was at the end of the Western Boulevard project, and all they did was they redid the ditches on either side of the road. They really didn't do anything in the middle of the road. And of course, they stopped at the house next to me. They never got to my house or the houses beyond me, all right? But the, I'm living here since October of '09, and there's never been any road maintenance done on my block. So does that mean I could expect maybe this year or next year I will have my road done? I mean, I could honestly say, I mean, okay, I'm on a cul-de-sac, it's a den, so we don't have a lot of traffic, which is a good thing, but we are now getting a lot of kids living on the block, and they're out there all the time. I could honestly say that the edge of the road has eroded at least two feet or more, and it's just crumbling. You know, so I hear this a lot from friends and other people, and so we could expect to be, well, you said we're going to be done in four more years, so that's a good thing.
Well, that's an important note. That's where this, in fact, we are going to be at the home show in May, have our own booth at Public Works to talk about residents. We get that question a lot. We went to the home show last year, and I stayed busy for three days answering a question, where am I? We need it to me. This answers every question for people, which if you are able to deduct two years, we know where we're going to get to you by the color of your road. So find your house.
That red line vertical, that's Robert Road?
That's Robert Road.
Okay.
So that was a major arterial that we did, we talked about. And of course, the red color says it was done last year, if you look in the legend. But wherever your house is at.
The purple that goes just across at the top there, that's Long Look?
That would be Long Mesa.
Long Mesa, okay.
So we can pick it out, and we can answer your question. We'll be there in two years. Got a good understanding where you live, Councilman? And be two years. You will start getting pre-chip maintenance probably next year. Very similar to some of these areas you see, which the green where you saw was orange on the first exhibit, as you can see there, they are the ones that are at year eight and nine, those who's being done. Your roads are about, if I got it right, yeah, year six and seven. So you're correct, it hasn't been done since '09? You're the six, seven year, so you're going to be a following year.
So I could tell everybody to catch you at the home show.
Very good.
[laughing]
We do want to be attentive to residents.
Don't expect special treatment.
I think what's important to mention, Council, with some of the condition of deteriorated condition, we still patch potholes. So to say that we touch other roads that weren't on the program, that's not, if there's a pothole, we will patch it. We'll make a determination about what maintenance treatment is best. Or we say, no, we've got up to service level standard now, that when we will get to you for the pre-chip maintenance, that's when you see that service level standard raise, when that particular time is.
Yeah, well, fortunately, there are no cracks and no potholes on the block. It's just the edges are starting to...
Correct, so...
Yeah, they're starting to approach the middle of the road.
And we consider that meeting our service level until your particular street is out for pre-chip maintenance.
Vice Mayor, if I could, I wanted to interject. One last note I wanted to make was very similar to what we do here in, has been common practice, is a chip seal bid is out for contractor bid right now. A very large project, when you supercharge 1.4 million, even the local aggregate suppliers need a head start. So as we've talked about, that's out for bids right now. It will actually, the bids will close on May 1st, and we'll have a contractor recommendation. We'll bring that to you in late May to say, okay, for next year's budget, it'll start July 1st. But what that does, they hit the ground running on July 1st. As we've talked about in the past, most municipalities can't do that and be ready. We're ready to start writing checks July 1st for work done. So that queues us up. And the biggest thing is the oil suppliers, they're all queued up to get those deliveries, so that the chip seal operation went very well last year. That because they had that lead time to plan and put those things in place. Even the aggregate suppliers, when they make that amount of aggregate for a small area, that's a lot of aggregate. So they got to crush the aggregate, have it ready in piles. So everybody gets to work knowing that when you hit July 1st, we'd all get to get started then. As with any construction project, the oil's already been accounted for that we're going to need, the delivery dates and all the aggregates ready. And when that chip seal crew shows up with, in the neighborhood of about 30 people, and you're spending $40,000 to $50,000 a day on chip seal, there's been a lot of pre-planning. So just want to make sure, and we'll bring that to you for your recommendation and award.
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, just to comment, if I could, to Councilperson Grossman, one thing that we get a call, that we get calls on occasionally, is talking about the crumbling edges of chip seal roads or even asphalt roads. And it's very important to point out that, and some people don't understand this, they believe that there was defective construction, and that's why the edges of the chip seal are starting to break off. That's not true. There was a reason that curb and gutter was invented, and that is to hold the flexible pavement section of either asphalt or chip seal, to hold it together so it doesn't come unraveled. And as these chip seals age and their oil dries out, and then you get traffic on those edges, they're going to come apart, they're going to crumble. And so it's not faulty construction. What it is, it's the nature of the beast. And until you end up with a concrete ribbon along both sides of a flexible pavement, they will crumble.
Well, that I was totally aware of. I mean, that's never a problem. I also know that that's where all the cars park, so the, you know, so the tires run over the edges, and I know that they're brittle, and it'll start chipping. You know, I know that. So I know it was not defective workmanship, you know. I never, I mean, if I even threw out that, I'd, no.
No, that was just for the benefit of some folk that really are unaware of the nature of asphalctic surfaces.
Bring it back.
Right, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes?
Could I take a moment, please, and invite our two officers down here to the front podium and introduce themselves?
Sure.
Both, no. The trainer's leaving. He can't leave. And also, Marty, I just wanted to let you know, we're just not going to do your street at all. Just joking.
Or last, let's do him last.
You're coming.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Holman, and I've been since July, I've been a recruiter now in OIT and officer in training. I've been in town for 16 years, married with one kid.
Well, welcome. We appreciate you.
So that means you'll stick with us.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Officer Jeremy Wissnan, Prescott Valley Police Department. I've been here for 10 years, serving the community and looking forward to another 10.
Thank you, sir.
Or 20.
Okay, last item tonight is future transportation connectivity.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Council. Hope you're ready and warmed up with all the exhibits I've been showing. I've got quite a few more to show you that hopefully explain what we're looking for with transportation. Thing I want to focus on when I get started is, when I say transportation, really what, roads is a lion's share of the work we do, but what's important too, when you talk transportation, you have that segment of the community that doesn't have a vehicle. So we always like to make sure we have a very robust multi-use path system and/or trail system for recreation here in Prescott Valley. So when I talk about transportation, some are going to be roads, some are going to be the multi-use path extension, expansions that we're currently undertaking. To cut to the point, here is a good map of the town. You can see the core of the town from original township there with the infamous cross and the like, but you can see some of the other subdivisions on the outskirts. You see in the red line is our incorporated limits, so I think you're aware, some of the subdivisions have grown up on the outside. So this is a good showing of what I'm going to talk about. Biggest thing I want you to focus on is the state land parcels that are denoted in blue. So what we're going to talk about is our transportation across those particular Arizona State Land Trust parcels, and what we've done in the past, in addition to where we want to go with particular transportation across those parcels. So what's important to keep in mind is, you know, state land is a trust. So they're not particularly, you know, they're governed through the state, but they're a trust. So that's a very important, they're very sovereign in what the decisions they make, or their land when they choose to sell land. Just a little about staying on some of the highlights, of course, at statehood, at statehood, there was two sections per township given at a minimum for state land section that benefits the schools. The sale of state land parcels for development, when they come out, they use that principle in order to fund schools. So they always keep that principle in play, but the interest is what they use to fund schools, a certain portion of that. I think you're aware of that. So that's why there is what's called state land. It's not a particular private property until state land sells it at auction. So to get started, you can see all the blue sections up there, you know, that's a mile by mile. Those are state land sections, and my presentation night will talk about certain things we've done with transportation across those. Not going back way too far in history, but there has been some acquisitions in the past. As you see that flag up there that called out Coyote Springs Road, that was an acquisition across state land in order to put a road across, in order to provide connectivity to the incorporated areas of Coyote Springs in the past. Reason that one's up there as one of the older ones is because when the town annexed out to that area, we assumed that particular acquisition that was done by Yavapai County. So that's one that was done back in 2000. Another thing to point out, some of it, even before 2000, there were several, every time you see a town roadway adjacent to state land, the Manleys, the Lone Cactus, half of that particular roadway was private development, and we went to state land as the town prior to 2000 and got acquisition to make those road widens and move those fences back. So we've got several that actually predate this particular one. Some other acquisitions, Robert Road in 2002, we had the foresight back then to provide that connectivity of Robert Road. As part of that same 2002 acquisition, you had the Powers Avenue and also the trail that cuts over to Coyote Springs School. As you can see, it's part of that same one in 2001, the Viewpoint. There was a particular individual here, and the staff in place had the foresight. When we're looking at long-range planning, that Viewpoint Drive would extend to the north. Council may recall, we're starting to design, we're going to bring that to you soon, to start the design of the Viewpoint connector between Manley and Roundup. We've talked plenty about that. It's in the budget. It's important to note that the particular right-of-way was actually acquired in 2001. It's been sitting when the trigger point would be in order to provide that particular improvement. So that was 2001. Part of FEMA drainage was acquired in 2001 down near the Roundup area. Superstition Drive was acquired in 2002, some work down in that particular area. Moving on, the Glassford Hill Channel, that was about the time I got here, was in 2006. That was a very successful project to help some of floodplains. So keep in mind, not always transportation, but some drainage in the past. University Drive was acquired, of course, to NCU. You can notice where NCU is located there, there was an acquisition across state land in 2006 to provide access. That, all these particular, had to run through state land and be purchased. And then Antelope Meadows Drive has been one that, as part of the subdivision, that one was actually perfected in 2009 to provide that secondary access up to the Viewpoint Pronghorn area. As you see, that skirts the northern edge of that particular state land parcel. This is where we've been, towns have been very active with state land in order to acquire these particular parcels. One that's, I think, been wildly popular, of course, is the Glassford Hill Trail, acquired in 2015. So as you're aware, about this time last year, the trail was being constructed and put up to the top. So that was an acquisition. To talk about a little bit about, you know, those do need to be purchased, we went through the process with state land in order to purchase that right-of-way. And not only did it benefit trails, but I think it's important to note too, that we also got the multi-use path right along that channel. So if we ever have funding in place, we've already got the pre-approved right. We do now over a dirt multi-use path along the channel, but that was part of that right-of-way acquisition. If council may recall, that right-of-way acquisition had funding not only from Public Works, but also the Water Utility Department. In addition, the parks had a contribution for the trail to the top. So a partnership even among uses here within town departments. So that was wildly popular. One thing to point in line, I talked about a trust. We look long-range with our planning. One thing to keep in mind, the trust works very methodically, and you need to have very much patience with them. You don't dictate the timeline to them. And there's lots of processes and paperwork, and they move at their own pace with their appraisals and their committees that look at whether or not they're even going to grant you the right-of-way. So a good example was, I looked back in my file with this most recent acquisition. We started that particular process in 2010. We just acquired it in 2016. So even with us paying for it, it took around six years. That's really quite common. Five to six years can be a timeline for a new acquisition when they consider it, take it to committee, and once again, it's a trust. They don't have to sell to us, nor can you particularly condemn them. They say, go away. So very methodical. My point I want to bring when we talk about some acquisition, when we look at, it's good to get started now if you know when that horizon date is, when you want to particularly have that acquisition. Let's talk about what's in a particular council action in front of you, is the Castle Drive right-of-way. This one's actually one that is not fully complete, but we started this one about two years ago, because when we got the acquisition of the trail, we needed a trailhead. And what we also need to do, similar, we talked about roadways adjacent to state land, Castle Drive was about 15 feet wide, right up against the boundary line. So part of that particular project, we got a right of entry, the right to do it, and then settle up later. But as we did in there, was when we widened the road, we need to get acquisitions. So the state land gave us a right of entry, but that particular process is almost done. We've gotten the appraisal, and what they're doing now is they're going to go to the auction process and the public announcement. So our next year's budget has a proposed purchase of $85,000 for that particular right-of-way, plus utilities for a water line. So that's the next year's budget. It wasn't this current year's budget, but it rolled over till next year. So we look forward to recommending that we complete that acquisition of the $85,000 to pay for that particular Castle Drive right-of-way. And this is just a little more detail showing where that particular parking lot is. I think council is well aware. We've shown this a lot, that this was the acquisition. All that whole trail is on that whole state land parcel that we acquired. Moving along, the next one we want to look at is the connectivity, and I talked about the multi-use path that would provide connectivity from the Highway 69 multi-use path in Stone Ridge. Our long-term vision is to continue connectivity along that particular route, and this shows the better detail. As you see, the parking lot, there is a section that we haven't acquired yet that we need to, that would connect up the proposed Glassford Heights two sections. So as part of our transportation planning, this particular corridor would extend multi-use path capability with hard service or the right to be in there, part of this acquisition. So this is one that we have started with state land. Hey, what do you think? We've been about a year, and we're waiting to hear back from them. Says, yes, it'd be a good idea to continue on with your plans. So this is one that we'd like to have for a transportation corridor. Important thing to point out too, a lot of our transportation corridors obviously include utilities. That's just Public Works instruction. A lot of these do include the particular water utility component with them too. So you pay for both as part of your acquisition. Next parcel is, we found with the wild popularity of the Summit Trail up to Glassford, is the Prescott Circle Trail. There's an opportunity to provide some connectivity on the adjacent state land parcel, so we could partner with the City of Prescott to bring that connectivity from the Summit Trail to the 50-mile Prescott Circle Trail. So we've got some preliminary look at that. We'd like to recommend we start looking at that particular endeavor with state land and purchase that particular right-of-way to extend that trail system up there. So that is the Summit Trail. That one wasn't particularly listed. I added it after the council action, but for your consideration. And here's just showing a little bit more detail of that particular connectivity outside the town boundary, but very well received for a regional cooperation in order to do a particular joint project with the City of Prescott. Another acquisition, in January, we actually finished the PV Pipeline Multi-Use Path. It's Northern Terminus, as you're well aware, is Powers Avenue. But what we'd like to do is, that was a long process to get that particular grant funding, but now it'd be the time that if we'd want to extend that pathway and connect up to existing pathways in Pronghorn and Viewpoint, all part of our long-range multi-use path planning that's in the general plan, is we would like to approach state land and start that process in order to get that right to be in the same gas line right-of-way. We've been in touch with Kinder Morgan, and they said, you need to go to state land and make sure you get permission from them too. So part of the process to get it started, of course, there's no funding source yet to extend the multi-use path, but if you get a funding source, the long timeline that I talk about, in order to have the right-of-way there, we could be looking at five or six years in order to get that right-of-way before we could even build if we had the money. So one more transportation corridor we're looking at. Here's just a little more detail. I always like to point out to council is that ADOT had the foresight with good, long foresight and planning. They've already put that box covert in as part of this particular alignment. So when we talk about long-range planning, there's always that horizon. You've got to build the small pieces, take bites as you go for that ultimate vision you have for what that transportation corridor can be. So that particular box covert's probably valued at $700,000 to $1 million. Best built as part of the Viewpoint, but the town was able to get that in there so that if we do get the right-of- if we do get the right-of-way from state land, which I would imagine we can, the highway is not a particular impediment to completing that connectivity. Why is that corridor so important? The connectivity to have a below-grade crossing there would really make that viability and safe for that particular transportation route. So I wanted to point that out. It'd be nice to move forward with planning and acquisition of state land there. Last one we want to show is really part of the two cream-colored sections that Glassford Heights and/or successors there, that's been planned. What we'd like to do there as part of the transportation plan may be that Stone Ridge Drive connectivity has to be built. Maybe it's a two-lane road, initially as we always build, but that's a section of state lands you can see to connect up to the existing stub of Stone Ridge Drive off of 69, to cross that state land section. We'd like to start talking about that and getting it in play, in order what would be required there, in order to provide that connectivity across that state land piece. Those are the corridors, this is a little more detail, as always, that staff has developed. It's important to point out, this is a very conceptual layout, so to speak, for the Glassford Heights, but what that does do is give some conceptual to say, yes, Stone Ridge Drive would have to be extended as part of that. We probably need to start talking with state land and get those timelines going, if the developer comes out and starts moving very fast on development of that particular area. So we wouldn't want that to be an impediment to good continued mobility and transportation This is one that is an important corridor. If you see the state land piece, that, of course, the Department of Transportation did the Highway 89A widening back in 2003, they had to get acquisition across that particular state land piece. They're no different. Even the Department of Transportation has to pay state land for the rights of way, which they're not, you know, it's a trust, it needs to benefit the schools. But what's important to note is, an extension of Glassford and/or an extension over to Pronghorn Parkway, what that would do if you approached state land, it would open up other sections of transportation quarters in order to serve other sections. Or even state land could find the advantage of selling that particular parcel for the benefit of the schools, and that become private property. So, we'd like to look at the extension of Glassford Hill Road, and also an extension of Pronghorn Park Ranch Parkway, you know, over to the east of existing Pronghorn Ranch Parkway off of Viewpoint Drive. So, here's an exhibit, kind of giving you a little more detail. As you saw, even the long-range vision, the current one, is to just have that short connectivity, but ultimately, our transportation plans looking way out 25 years, show Glassford Hill Road, of course, extending to the north. So at some point in time, this has to be put into plans, which we always do. So, there's a busy one of everything, what we've done in the past and what we'd like to look for, and you can see, there is quite a bit of partnership with state land in the past, and what we'd like to move forward with in the future. So, hard to read, but that's all of it rolled up into one exhibit. Councilman Mallory, you talked about what's important to us is, you know, our planning. The Public Works Department, very much the Chapter 6, the circulation element, is the world of, my world of transportation. So I always like to point out that in our general plan, that was ratified in 2013 by the public and voted on, we very much follow that plan. And what's important to note is, this is what we call the Circulation 11 exhibit. This is the major roadways that are in either some part of connectivity for expansion and/or new roads, as we talked about with Stone Ridge Drive. This is the one that we use to show, well, where are you going with all this? Why are you doing that? Very much voted on by the public, and it's the guideline I follow on why we do what we're doing and spending the public dollar towards looking out, to make sure that we never have that particular problem of, boy, there's houses in the way where we want to expand. So, we have done a good job in Prescott Valley to plan ahead for the future, and we'll continue to do that. When you spend those transportation dollars, we're always following that plan that's been publicly approved. And with our cooperation with other regional transportation planning through the central Yavapai Metro and Paulson Planning Organization, this is just a subset of making sure we get those transportation corridors across state land. With that, if you have any questions you have about moving forward or these transportation corridors?
Larry?
Yeah, if I could, to put this in perspective, and I'd like to applaud Norm for going ahead and looking at all these state land parcels, but if you think back to when councilperson Patty Lasker was here, she was a very strong advocate for the Glassford Hill Trail. That was a long time ago. And she pushed and pushed, making sure that we kept after state land department, making sure that we had funding available when the appraisals came in and everything else. But that was a five-year process. And so the corridors, whether trails or roads, that Norm has identified, it takes a while. And so, going ahead and moving forward with it now, hats off to you, Norm, it's a good plan.
As you may recall too, when we did get the approval in order to build the trail, we don't have that similar patience here in Prescott Valley. I think we're out the next week constructing the trail to the top and had it done pretty quickly, so, but that's our pace in order to build if we get the approval.
Other comments or questions? Michael?
Yeah, just kind of selfish, wondering, on the Stone Ridge Drive, what's the distance of that planned expansion, and what's the timeframe?
Timeframe would be, well, the timeframe, we talked about the trust, could take up to five, six years. But you can see by that being a section, that's one mile, that section.
Oh, is that right?
So that's a one-mile section. So, at which time you start the discussion with state land, you know, there's, you know, lots of cultural resources review and their process, but yes, there'd be some engineering that has to be done too, for an acquisition like that. But you need to get the process started, as we talked about. You know, let's take, let's talk about the most recent one, the Trail to the Top. We actually had a plan in place before we actually started the acquisition to say, what would be the best route up there? That route just wasn't willy-nilly, it was what, you know, what met criteria for trail development, in addition to, you know, minimize whatever particular impact you have. That's why that alignment was actually engineered long before we even made the state land, so that when we moved forward with it, it was already vetted on what that alignment would be. And same way it would be with Stone Ridge.
Would Stone Ridge be one of the longer ones, or is that, is there others that, through the acquiring of state land?
Well, it would be. I think that same section, we talked about the Glassford Extension North, that one is the same, about a mile across the state land section. So as you see the checkerboard, and the blue is very much, you know, the state land sections, that's a mile. So, that's all part of the planning, is getting the cooperation about adjacent land uses to make sure we get the connectivity.
Jody?
Vice Mayor, I just wanted to make note here that our town manager said that Larry would carry, or not Larry, but Norm would carry me to the top of the summit if I asked for a field trip up there. So, I really wouldn't mind getting up to the top, finally. We tried it one time, but some of the other, I'm interested in the connectivity. I see some real value here, and I wouldn't mind having a field trip out in those areas.
We've been up it before, it's a wonderful hike.
Laura?
I too want to thank you, Norm. You know, I talked about the citizen who told me they didn't want to live in a soulless community. These are part of the things that they feel so proud about. Photographers love these opportunities. They get to practice their art form. Hikers, nature lovers, and I'm so proud of our community, because this is part of our general plan. And I'm so glad that I got to live here long enough to see it actually now being functioning and happening. So, thank you for planning very carefully and sharing it with us.
Thank you, Norm.
You're welcome. So, no particular soon action, but what we do as staff is, depending, working with the private development community and/or with state land, we can work within, you know, the expenditure limits and get some engineering done in that process, so we'll keep you informed. No different, the Castle Drive, as we say, we thought it would happen this year, we put it in the budget, it's going to happen, we think, July 15th, and we'll bring that particular expenditure to you.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, one other thing I'd like to do tonight, that, and since I have the gavel, I think I can. There may be someone in the audience that would like to speak, so if there is anyone, I'd like to invite you up to speak, and I only have two things I would ask you for. One is that you keep your remarks under five minutes, and two, that you keep your remarks to anything that's currently on the agenda for tonight. Is there anyone that would like to come up?
I want to thank the council members for not having public taxpayers pay for the arts. And I kind of, and I think the reason why is, a lot of people, excluding what one council member said, were against that art design. And to me, it reminded me of a weather vane that you should put on top of the Civic Center. But I am glad that you're going to go ahead and, you know, enrich the, promote cultural enrichment for our children, of our community, not from another state, from our community. And to decide how to promote, the best way to promote the bucks, which you guys have decided to do. And, you know, like, having a contest, like you guys have decided to do. And see, this here area was formed from pioneers from way back in the 1800s, and they were cattle ranchers. And that's what, I came here because I'm from Kansas, and mine were farmers. And mine came, brought that multi-grain wheat from Russia. And I think we ought to go, like, one council member said, you know, I hate to say it, but taxpayers paid for their museums. But we don't need a museum funded by taxpayers. But what I'd like to see is more contests for our children, for cultural events. What is, what did this area was like in the 1800s? Like that statue, you know, the pioneer woman, the javelinas, the pronghorns. This is what the whole Yavapai County, and was, that's what the Fane family, they traded Montezuma as well for jackass flats, now is parts of Prescott Valley. You know, that's what I like to see. What does this mean to you children, when you see here, you know, look around? And I'm glad you decided to not, and I'm glad that you went on the direction you are in having the children and the college kids in this area, and not from, not from an adult from another state or town. So, thank you.
Okay.
And no taxpayers have to pay for it.
Thank you for coming down tonight and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, the meeting is adjourned.